Good evening. We'll call the January meeting of the Oak Ridge City Council to order. Want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. We appreciate your presence here in the City Council Room tonight and those of you watching on television. Our invocation tonight will be led by Reverend Derrick Hammond from Oak Valley Baptist Church and the Pledge of Allegiance will then be led by Katie Roach of Oak Ridge High School. So with that, Reverend Hammond, please stand.
Let us bow. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all of the earth, Father God. We thank you for the undeserved privilege of gathering together on this evening that we might conduct and oversee the affairs of this great city. We do thank you for the leaders that you have assembled in this place. We pray that you anoint our time together on this evening, that it might serve the purpose for which we have gathered. And we do thank you in advance for all that you have done, not only on this evening, but in this year. It is indeed in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Katie. Before we do the roll call, I'd like to note that Mr. Chin, Vice Mayor, sends his best wishes, but he'll be unable to attend tonight. He's battling the flu. So with that, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Callison, Mayor Protem Chin, Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Mayor Gooch.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Vogel.
Here.
Thank you. I would like to have a motion to suspend the rules so that we can amend our agenda and take a couple of things out of order. The first one being the elections to our boards. I'd like to move those up. And secondly, we've received a letter from the National Nuclear Security Administration related to the disagreement, dispute related to the new power lines going into, across Pine Ridge. And I note that Mr. Wyatt is here, so I'd like to have him tell us what's in this letter and what the schedule is going to be. And I'd like to do that after we have our elections. So if there's a motion, I'd appreciate it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed. We are on elections. There will be a number of these that I think can be done by acclamation. We will try to move this process along as best we can. Madam Clerk, first election.
Elect one applicant to the Anderson County Community Action Commission.
Moved and seconded.
The applicant is Susan Asbury. The motion is to elect Ms. Asbury by acclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Ms. Asbury is elected. The next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect one applicant to the Anderson County Economic Development Association, and there are three applicants for one position.
As a reminder, according to council rules, the successful candidate has to have four votes. We've been through this before. And if someone gets no votes on the first ballot, then they don't go past the first ballot.
Yeah, and consistent with tradition, can we ask if any of the applicants are here, if they'd like to stand and introduce themselves?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Forgive me for that. Yes, the applicants are Richard Hauser, Terry McGee, and Eric Tobler. Okay? All right.
And don't forget to sign your ballots. Councilmember Smith votes for Tobler. Councilmember Hope votes for Tobler. Mayor Gooch votes for Tobler. Councilmember Dodson votes for Tobler. And Councilmember Callison votes for Hauser. Eric Tobler's elected.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Tobler. Madam Clerk, next election.
Elect two applicants to the Oak Ridge Beer Permit Board, and there are three applicants for two positions.
And the applicants are Mr. William Bailey, Ms. Melissa McMahon, and Mr. David Mosby. Are any of those individuals present? No?
Councilmember Vogel votes for Bailey and Mosby. Councilmember Smith votes for Bailey and Mosby. Councilmember Hope votes for Bailey and Mosby. Mayor Gooch votes for Bailey and Mosby. Councilmember Dodson votes for Bailey and Mosby. And Councilmember Callison votes for Bailey and Mosby. William Bailey and David Mosby are elected.
Congratulations, Mr. Bailey and Mr. Mosby. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect two applicants to the Board of Building and Housing Code Appeals, and you have three applicants for two vacant positions.
The applicants are Mr. John McMillan, Philip Nipper, and Amy Seber.
Councilmember Vogel votes for Nipper and Seber. Councilmember Smith votes for Nipper and Seber. Councilmember Hope votes for McMillan and Nipper. Mayor Gooch votes for Nipper and Seber. Councilmember Dodson votes for Nipper and Seber. And Councilmember Callison votes for Nipper and Seber. Philip Nipper and Amy Seber are elected.
Congratulations, Mr. Nipper and Ms. Seber. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect one applicant to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there are two applicants for one vacant position.
Councilmember Vogel votes for Ball. Councilmember Smith votes for Ball. Councilmember Hope votes for Ball. Mayor Gooch votes for Ball. Councilmember Dodson votes for Ball. And Councilmember Callison votes for McMillan. Sid Ball is elected.
Congratulations to Mr. Ball. All right, Madam Clerk, the next election is for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Explore Oak Ridge. Would you?
Uh-uh.
Can't.
Uh-uh.
Do you get any... But let's don't get in front of our headlights here.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, tell us what our situation is.
Yes. The bylaws of the CBB Explore Oak Ridge stipulates that three positions have to be set aside for hotel representatives. And then we have, so we have those three that are elected yearly. They have one-year terms. Only one of the hotel representatives reapplied, and that's Heather Brown. But she also expressed an interest in being considered for one of the three at-large vacancies we have that are based on Oak Ridge residency. She is a resident of Oak Ridge. So basically, for three at-large positions, you've got Naomi Asher, Heather Brown, Barbara Farrell, Allison Hummel, Carol Smallridge, and Sarah Wieland. So you're voting, there's five people for three vacant at-large positions. So you can vote for three.
Three, okay.
And can we ask who's in the audience?
Yes. So Ms. Naomi Asher, Heather Brown, Barbara Farrell, Allison Hummel, Carol Smallridge, and Sarah Wieland. Okay? Or Wieland?
Question.
Ms. Hope.
Beth, so Heather could either be elected as the hotel representative or an at-large person, either way.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Her preference was to be in the running for one of the three-year terms. That was her first preference, since she is an Oak Ridge resident. But yes, if...
Second question is, since we only had the one hoteler represented by Ms. Brown, the other two places will just be vacant at this time?
Mark DeRose is working on making contact with the other hotels, and we had indicated to him that when they found the person that was going to fill the position, that we, he could bring that back, and we could appoint them at a later time.
Third question.
Yes.
With Mr. DeRose in present, maybe you can help answer this. How important is it to have the hotelers represented on a yearly basis if we're not getting good participation from them being on the board? I mean, is that something that is still critically important for Explore Oak Ridge Convention and Visitors Bureau now?
Yes.
Or is that something that can be modified later date?
Yes, sir. I think it is very important. I think the problem here was probably a lack of communication. We've had some hoteliers turn over. One that rolled off had left for personal reasons, health-related reasons. The other that we were hoping would apply is a new person. The hotel was sold and purchased by a new company. So I think we have some lack of communication. So we've been working to bridge that gap of communication, but we just haven't been able to yet. But I do believe that having three hotelier positions on the board is absolutely critical to our success. They've been incredible since I've been there, at least. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dodson.
Yeah. While Mark is still in the audience, I want to clear, get a little bit of clearance on this. First of all, I know that Heather Brown can run as at-large, also as a hotelier. If she was a hotelier, then it would give us more choices. It would give us a total of four votes.
Yes.
And her being one of those, correct?
Yes.
Rather than just the three.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not suggesting how anybody votes, but it gives us more choices from that docket of people who've applied. And then if we're going to look at another way of voting for all six of these people, you'll have to go back into your bylaws and change that. And I noticed that you didn't want to do that at this time. So you want to...
We, well, we're not in a position to recommend changes to our bylaws. That's something that we're potentially considering over the next year. But at this stage, I would agree with you that if Heather Brown were to be elected as a hotelier, that would give more opportunity to the folks that are applying. And they are, everybody on the docket here is absolutely high-quality, and we'd be happy to have any of them.
So would it be proper to make a suggestion that she's just, as she does the hotelier position, and that gives us three more votes?
You're on City Council. You can make whatever motion you want to make.
Okay.
You can move to...
I would make that motion.
I would support it.
Moved and seconded that Ms. Brown be elected as one hotel representative by acclamation.
That's correct. You can do it.
Hearing no objections, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ms. Brown is elected as the hotel representative. So we are now voting for three individuals, three, so we have five for three.
That's correct. Five for three, that's right.
Okay.
Councilmember Vogel votes for Asher, Hummel, and Smallridge. Councilmember Smith votes for Farrell, Hummel, and Smallridge. Councilmember Hope votes for Asher, Farrell, and Smallridge. Mayor Gooch votes for Farrell, Hummel, and Smallridge. Councilmember Dodson votes for Asher, Farrell, Hummel. Okay, wait a minute. You...
Yeah, it should be Smallridge.
Can you correct your ballot? You've got four check marks.
Yeah.
We need to correct that ballot. And we need to correct...
No, she was already elected.
We're just voting for three, three candidates, not four. We've already got the hotel rep, so... Councilmember Dodson votes for Asher, Farrell, and Smallridge. And Councilmember Callison votes for Asher, Farrell, and Smallridge. Naomi Asher, Barbara Farrell, and Carol Smallridge are elected. And we have the hotelier by acclamation.
All right. Congratulations, ladies. Ms. Asher, Ms. Farrell, and Ms. Smallridge, correct? Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect six applicants to the Environmental Quality Advisory Board. We had six vacancies, and we had five people apply for six vacancies.
Second.
Moved and seconded that these individuals be elected by acclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The individuals who have been elected by acclamation are Ms. Rebecca Bowman, Dr. William Dean, Ms. Wendy Doolittle, Mr. Robert Kennedy, and Mr. Kelly Smith.
Wendy, excuse me very much. I thank you for being here, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
One comment. These are not all, these are not all long terms. There are some unexpired terms in here, so we'll need to decide who has the unexpired terms.
Okay. Well, there's five that are elected, and there's five three-year terms.
And one, and then there's one...
And the unexpired term can go unfilled.
So you can fill them all with the longer terms if that's your desire?
If that's... Your motion, your motion to elect the five to the three-year terms, and then we'll just have to fill the unexpired one.
Do you need that moved and seconded? So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Does that work for the city clerk's record?
That is good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect three applicants to the Health and Educational Facilities Board, and we had three applicants for three vacant positions.
Moved and seconded that the following individuals be elected by acclamation. Dr. Fay Martin, David Mason, and Sarah Wieland. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Martin, Mr. Mason, and Ms. Wieland. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect one applicant to the Industrial Development Board, and we had one applicant for one vacant position.
I move we elect Sasha Benjamin by acclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect one applicant to the Oak Ridge Housing Authority, and you have four applicants for one vacant position.
All right. And the applicants are Ms. Naomi Asher, Mr. Tom Behan, Rebecca Bowman, Charlotte Bowers.
Councilmember Smith votes for Behan. Councilmember Hope votes for Behan. Mayor Gooch votes for Asher. Councilmember Dodson votes for Behan. And Councilmember Callison votes for Behan. Tom Behan is elected.
Tom Behan is elected. Congratulations, Mr. Behan. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect three applicants to the Oak Ridge Land Bank Corporation Board of Directors, and we had three applicants for three vacant positions.
Now, is this the one where we have to, we've got...
There's a time factor in this one. You've got, let's see, one position goes through December of 2019, and two positions, 2020, December 31st of 2020.
Right, so we can elect by acclamation and then vote on the terms.
Right.
All right. All those in favor of these three individuals being elected by acclamation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's Ms. Ann Dunthorn, Mr. Charlie Jernigan, and Mr. David Mosby. I know two of them are in the audience. Thank you. All right. So we're now voting on...
You're voting on three-year terms for two of them and a two-year term for one of them.
Okay, we have a ballot.
And you'll have to write their names in on this one. The three-year terms are the first two lines, and the two-year term is the third Councilmember Vogel votes a three-year term for Dunthorn and Jernigan, and a two-year term for Mosby. Councilmember Smith votes a three-year term for Mosby and Dunthorn, and a two-year term for Jernigan. Councilmember Hope votes three-year terms for Dunthorn, Jernigan, and a two-year term Mayor Gooch votes a three-year term for Jernigan, three-year term for Mosby, and a two-year term for Dunthorn. Councilmember Dodson votes a three-year term for Dunthorn, a three-year, I mean, a three-year term for Jernigan, three-year term for Dunthorn, and a two-year term for Mosby. Councilmember Callison votes a three-year term for Dunthorn, three-year term for Jernigan, and a two-year term for Mosby. Ann Dunthorn and Charlie Jernigan have three-year terms, and David Mosby has a two-year term.
All right. Again, congratulations, Ms. Dunthorn, Mr. Jernigan, Mr. Mosby, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect two applicants to the Oak Ridge Municipal Planning Commission, and we had two applicants for two vacant positions.
Moved and seconded that Ms. Claudia Lever and Mr. Steve Whitson be elected by acclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are elected. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect two applicants to the Personnel Advisory Board, and you had three applicants for two vacant positions.
Councilmember Vogel votes for Hebert and Wallace. Councilmember Smith votes for Hebert and Wallace. Councilmember Hope votes for Hebert and Wallace. Mayor Gooch votes for Hebert and Wallace. Councilmember Dodson votes for Hebert and Wallace. And Councilmember Callison votes for Hebert and Wallace.
Congratulations.
Bonnie Hebert and Martha Wallace are elected.
Hebert and Ms. Wallace. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect four applicants to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, and you had six applicants for four vacant positions.
And the applicants are Mr. David Kitsmiller, who's in the audience, Ms. Melissa McMahon, Michael Poehler, Dan Robbins, Ken Ruder, and Sarah Wieland.
And Dr. Robbins asked me to tell you all that he would be here if he were in town. He sends his regrets.
That's correct. That's correct.
There's four vacant... There's four vacancies, and then one will be a term we'll have to also vote for. Three positions are 20, December 31st of 2020, and one position is December 31st of 2018, but we'll first vote for the four vacancies. Councilmember Vogel votes for Kits Miller, Robbins, Reuter, and Wieland. Councilmember Smith votes for Kits Miller, Robbins, Reuter, and Wieland. Councilmember Hope votes for Kits Miller, McMahon, Robbins, and Reuter. Mayor Gooch votes for Kits Miller, McMahon, Robbins, and Reuter.
Reuter. Ken Reuter.
Reuter. I'm sorry. Reuter. Councilmember Dodson votes for Kits Miller, McMahon, Robbins, and Reuter. And Councilmember Callison votes for Kits Miller, Robbins, Reuter, and Wieland. We've got, David Kits Miller is elected, Daniel Robbins is elected, Ken Reuter is elected, and I don't have my fourth.
We'll have to get a second ballot.
We'll have to do another ballot. So, strike. Let's see. Mr. Poehler didn't get any votes.
Right.
So, it's between Sarah Wieland and Melissa McMahon.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Clerk?
Mm-hmm. It's correct.
So, cross off Kits Miller, Poehler, Robbins, Reuter, and just vote between Sarah Wieland and Melissa McMahon. Councilmember Vogel votes for Wieland. Councilmember Smith votes for McMahon. Councilmember Hope votes for McMahon. Mayor Gooch votes for McMahon. Councilmember Dodson votes for McMahon. And Councilmember Callison votes for Wieland. Melissa McMahon's elected.
Congratulations, Ms. McMahon. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Now, we have to do the terms.
Oh, I'm sorry. The terms.
I, I move that we elect to the longer term, the three individuals who received votes, who were elected on the first ballot.
All right. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor indicate by, the, the three elected on the first ballot will have the regular terms. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? So...
Ms. Wieland will have the December 2018 term. I mean, Ms. McMahon, I'm sorry.
Ms. McMahon.
Sorry.
Okay. All right. Next, next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect five applicants to the Senior Advisory Board, and we had actually four applicants for five vacant positions.
Moved and seconded that Ms. Martha Adler-Jasny, Susan Asbury, Richard Hauser, and Alfred Skidmore be elected by acclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Congratulations to those individuals. Next election, Madam Clerk.
Elect two applicants to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board, and we had two applicants for two vacant positions.
All right. Again, the applicants are Ms. Jasny and Ms. McMahon. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? They are elected by acclamation. Now, the Trade Licensing Board?
We had one applicant for two vacancies on Trade Licensing Board, but it was determined, even though he has a business in Oak Ridge and owns property in Oak Ridge, he is living in another, in another county. So, we had to disqualify him from being considered at this time until we look at some issues with the Trade Licensing Board and the pool of applicants, and whether we need to make any changes to their bylaws or city code regarding that.
So... We're done?
We're done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The next item that we're going to take up is, this afternoon, late in the afternoon, I received a letter from Mr. Dale Christensen, Federal Project Director for UPF, stating that the agency will hold an information session on January 24th, 2018, at the Scarborough Community Center. The public forum will run from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. with a question-and-answer session involving NNSA and the Tennessee Valley Authority Leadership from 6:30 to 7:00. Mr. Steve Wyatt with NNSA is in the audience. Mr. Wyatt, would you come forward for just a minute, please? All right. Steve, could you just tell us now what, what the process is going to be, what NNSA is going to do in terms of advertising this?
First off, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. As noted in the letter, NNSA will hold an information session on January 24th at the Scarborough Community Center. This is to give local residents an opportunity to learn about not only the electrical substation project, but the UPF and, and our missions at Y-12. Key focus, of course, is on the electrical substation and the need for continued mission success at Y-12. This meeting will run from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We will have a question-and-answer session that will involve both the NSA and Tennessee Valley Authority Leadership, and that will be from roughly 6:30 to 7:00. We've been working with the Tennessee Valley Authority. We've, we have assessed the concerns that have been raised about this electrical substation project, and we'll discuss ways to address them at the information session on January 17th. And it goes without saying, we look forward to meeting with the community on January 24th and encourage everyone here to spread the word about the meeting. We hope to have a good turnout for the meeting.
And what are you going to, say you, what is NNSA going to do in terms of, of, again, advertising or promoting the meeting?
We will place ads in the local news media. We also plan to have flyers placed, and we'll, we'll get the word out to as many folks in as many ways as possible.
Okay. And it, it just strikes me as a little odd that we're having a meeting from 4:00 to 7:00, and you're only setting aside 30 minutes for question and answer.
Well, the, we will have various parts of the room set up with displays talking about the electrical substation project and other activities at, at Y-12, including UPF. And that's just the time we've have set, but certainly we're open to suggestions on that.
Any, any questions for Mr. Wyatt?
I'd certainly encourage you to, a lot more than 30 minutes for question and answer, either by starting the question-and-answer earlier or ensuring that the room will stay open as long as people want to talk, to ask questions. I'd also like to ask that some sort of written information about the project and the alternatives be provided by NNSA prior to this meeting. Up till now, it appears that the City of Oak Ridge, which really doesn't know what's going on, is the primary source of public information, and that's, that's not appropriate. I believe that you all need to get the word out in people's hands before this event, rather than having them show up and try to discover that evening.
We'll take, we'll certainly take that under consideration.
All right. Other, other questions or comments for, for Mr. Wyatt? Seeing none? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Under public hearings and first reading of ordinances, we have an ordinance to amend ordinance number two titled "The Zoning Ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee." By amending the zoning map, which is made part of the ordinance by changing the zoning district of parcel 001.00, Anderson County Tax Map 100A, Group C, approximately 1.1 acres from O2 Office District to B2 General Business District, said parcel being located at 101 Bus Terminal Road, and a public hearing is required.
So, move. All right. Now, is your, is your motion for, to, to open the public hearing?
Yes.
All right. Motion to open public hearings been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there, any members of the audience wishing to address a council on this, on this matter? Commissioner?
Good evening. Teresa Scott. I'm one of the county commissioners, District 7, as well as a resident here in Oak Ridge. And I simply wanted to say thank you very much to the council, the city, for working with County Commission in having the people's voices heard. The police department, as well as merchants and residents of this city, have really backed the project for the court to move from the present location to the Darcy Building. And we're all four new businesses coming in at the same time, but I just simply wanted to say thank you very much for working with us.
Commissioner, we want to thank you and, and the other members of County Commission, not only here in Oak Ridge, but across the county. The support has been unanimous for the general sessions courtroom here in Oak Ridge, and speaking for myself, and I think for council, you know, we believe it is very, very important for the citizens, not only of Oak Ridge, but other localities in, in the county, to have a, another option in terms of convenience for them. And so, again, we thank you for your efforts, and, and you might, while you're here, because this is all part and partial, because this, this, the court's moving from this location, just a brief status report on, on the court.
It's, it's in progress. We have work to be done. We are looking at getting a new heating and air system for the court side itself. We're trying to reclaim as much as possible from the present location to keep the costs down as well, and we're targeting, hopefully, April 1st.
And, and as I understand it, based on information I've seen, Mr. Capiello, the owner of the property, has been working very closely with County Law Director regarding how long we can keep the court there before we'll have to be relocated.
Correct. And at this time, they're looking at, at April 1st.
Yeah.
And again, though, you know, thank you very much for the support. Been fighting long and hard for it, and it looks like it's going to stay, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak during this public hearing? If not, is a motion to close the hearing? Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. We're back on the matter itself. Is there a motion on the, the rezoning? Moved and seconded. Mr. Blaisis?
The request is for a rezoning from O2 to B2. The surrounding land use and zoning is consistent with that request. This is for the zoning change only, not for any redevelopment of the property. If and when a proposal comes in, that will go through the normal site review process. Planning Commission voted nine to nothing in favor of the rezoning request.
Ms., Mr. Vogel?
So, on behalf of the Planning Commission and with that vote, there have been other comments that I know that have been circulated about concerns about the property itself, current utilization of traffic flows, and some of the parking concerns about, you know, day, parking, but when it goes to the, the new configuration, as you said, when it comes in for a site review, all of that will be reconsidered, so that'll get addressed at that time. So, those concerns still stand and can be addressed as they come back in front of the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just another clarification. Because the news media sometimes report information that's not on our agenda, do you clarify that the zoning request that we're looking at now is merely to change the zoning, it's not approval of any specific business? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? If not, let's, let's go to the board. Aye, six, no daves. The ordinance is passed on first reading. Next, next item of business, Madam Clerk.
There are no final adoption of ordinances, so we move on to resolutions. A resolution to adopt the City of Oak Ridge, Tennessee, 2018 State Legislative Agenda to inform state officials of key projects, policies, and priorities in the City of Oak Ridge, and to help secure funding for agreed-upon priorities of the community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The draft legislative agenda that's before you has been in the works for quite a while, and the, a number of the items on here are updates from previous years that lay out our current positions and requests, including Edgemore Road, the hall tax, a number of the state shared tax issues. One of the new items that you'll see on the bottom of page four regarding education is to request another review by the state legislature to consider revising the letter grade, that, system that has been assigned, it, it passed in 2016, Public Chapter 680, and this has turned out to be a rather controversial initiative that our Board of Education and our school system are opposed to as well. So, this is asking the General Assembly to modify Public Chapter 680 to allow the Department of Education to work with stakeholders to develop an accounting system that's transparent but meets the requirements without stigmatizing schools and districts by assigning letter grades. The, the...
We will have a joint Board of Education, City Council meeting coming up another week, and at that point in time, we've asked Tracy Bettendorf to give you a little overview of that process. It's quite unwieldy, and I think you'll be interested in that.
All right. Any, any questions for Ms. Fitzgerald or any comments? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? The, there are none, and so the legislative agenda for 2018 is adopted. Ms. Fitzgerald, thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a new disinfection system for the water treatment plant from Specialized Operations Services Cleveland, Tennessee, in the estimated amount of $87,831.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Before I call on Ms. McWaters, this will require unanimous vote because we did not go out for bid. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Ms. McWaters, tell us what we're doing here.
Well, as you were aware, before the city did an evaluation on the water treatment plant, which ultimately recommended a new plant at a different location, the intent was, and it actually was designed and put out to bid, to replace the existing chlorine gas disinfection system with a sodium hypochlorite system. And that came in at about 1.1 million with some additional costs associated, bringing it up to about 1.3 million. With the thought that eventually this is going to be abandoned in four to five years, we started to pursue jointly with DOE and other alternative. And we worked with a vendor and came up with this solution.
All right. Questions for Ms. McWaters? Mr. Vogel.
So, Sarah, we talked about this during one of the workshops about as we go forward with the water treatment plant, that some of this is, it's a skid, and so this is likely to be able to be incorporated in some way, shape, or form into the new treatment plant. It's not like we're going to abandon it in a couple of years. Is that correct?
It may not necessarily be incorporated in the treatment plant, but it can be used elsewhere in the system. As you're aware, the city of Oak Ridge is a very long system, and we're trying to carry a chlorine residual from the treatment plant all the way out to K-25 and that area. So this would allow us actually to incorporate it in different locations.
Like a booster somewhere.
To boost it, yes.
Okay. All right. So it's not something we're buying now, and we're just going to lose it in a couple of years?
Correct.
Thank you.
And to go along on that same line of thought, he asked one of the questions I was concerned about, but the other one would be, what type of shelf life does this particular piece of product have? I mean, is it something we're going to be able to use for a decade, or is it something that's just, you know, a three or four-year short-term solution?
No, this actually could be a long-term solution. I mean, obviously, there's pumps that have wear and tear that you would have to change out. But other than that, you know, maybe some of the piping and hosing or something like that. But really, most of it could be reused.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kalson.
This is a phenomenal solution. I can't imagine this. I mean, we could even throw this away. I mean, we're saving over a million dollars with this solution. I would just like to thank the Public Works Department for doing this extra work and finding the solution. I think it's fabulous. Even if we threw it away at $80,000, I mean, even though we never would do that, I'm just saying, I mean, versus a million plus, this is just fabulous. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, and then we'll get the city manager.
Could you briefly review the reasons why this is sole source? I understand it's related to the existing contract that was being modified.
Well, primarily, typically, besides chlorine gas, the second most common use is sodium hypochlorite, which is what the design that went out to bid that was in excess of a million dollars. The problem with that is you need bulk storage, and it was just, we didn't have area within the existing chlorine gas building to put that. So that's really what was driving the cost. We were going to have to really build an entirely different building to house the chemicals with piping and everything. So what we started to look at was a calcium hypochlorite, which is actually, it comes in dry tablet format. And it was something I actually had a little bit of experience on. I didn't know if it was necessarily going to be applicable. So we started to talk with DOE and brought in this particular vendor that we do business with, and they happened to basically supply this particular equipment. And so that's where we came through on this.
Okay. And I understand there will be a somewhat higher cost for the chemicals on this than there would be for the sodium. But we're probably saving on, you know, we're saving on some issues, safety issues for the chlorine, for sure. Do we know what the annual cost of this system is going to be compared with what we've been spending for chlorine?
Well, either whether we went with sodium hypochlorite or the calcium hypochlorite, you were looking at an increase in cost. It wasn't like one was the same as the other. Chlorine gas, the reason chlorine gas is so, what I want to say is, there's a cost savings associated with this, because it's a very strong disinfectant. You don't need to use a whole heck of a lot. You go a long way for a very little amount of what you're putting into the system. With sodium hypochlorite, it's actually only 12.5% of chlorine, so you have to use more of that to get the same dosage. This is actually 65%, so, you know, it's a little stronger, but again, it comes in a, and it's also more stable because it comes in a dry format.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Watson.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to share is historically, several years ago, we were approached by DOE and their assessment of the water plant to look at going to a solid system versus gaseous system. And as we looked at that particular cost, they agreed to pay a million dollars. I think we were slowed down when the cost of that came in at 1.3 million dollars, and then we got into a debate as to who was going to pay. It was to the advantage of the Department of Energy as opposed to us as a city operation to make that change. And as we looked at it, we said, well, we can reduce that cost. And, you know, as we look at changes in the future, five years down the line, new plants online, we can perhaps use this in other operations. We've asked them to look at the swimming pool as an option for that, and that also helps us in the future as far as cost are concerned.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, let's go to the board. I-6, no nays. Resolution is adopted. Next resolution, Madam Clerk.
A resolution approving the revised position classification plan for FY 2018 as recommended by the city manager.
Move for approval? Moved and seconded. Mr. Watson.
Mayor, council, this is, we're bringing forward to you kind of a final recommendation of the entire class plan. This identifies our particular positions and brings those forward. There were a number of appeals and reviews. Those have now been completed, and we're bringing these final adjustments and lists to you. Mr. Applegate can answer any particular questions on that.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Applegate? Mr. Vogel?
So, Bruce, I appreciate the Personnel Advisory Board met last Friday, right? And so when they reviewed this, there were some other, you made the administrative changes, I guess, and so folks that aren't looking at this, it's really the specific position titles and whether they're the FLSA exempt, non-exempt. And so that's fundamentally what it is, is just position titles and whether or not they're exempt, non-exempt status. There were a couple of questions that got raised at the Personnel Advisory Board meeting about whether some supervisor position should be exempt or non-exempt. And I don't know, because I didn't go back and compare notes, is this the corrected version?
Well, those haven't been changed at this moment in time. Those questions have been forwarded directly onto McGrath, you know, Resources Group while they're looking at the job descriptions to make their final submission of that material. It'll be taken into account then. So there may be a few small changes with respect to, I think there were four groupings that were brought up.
I didn't have my notes, but, okay.
But those have been forwarded on.
So we don't need, because one of the things was, we were going to bring back any other changes back to council for this. I don't think, based on that discussion at the Advisory Board meeting, that that would be necessary, but I'm going to let others comment on that if they want to. But those were relatively minor, and all it is is whether or not they're going to shift to exempt versus non-exempt, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It's really not going to impact the salary that would go along with the position. No? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from Mr. Applegate or Mr. Watson? Seeing none, let's go to the board.
Just clarifying one more thing, following up to Councilman Vogel's questions. You mentioned the exempt versus non-exempt, but this package we're looking at does reclassify some of our existing positions in terms of where they're slotted on the pay scale. And that's a significant thing that we're approving this evening. It's not strictly exempt versus non-exempt. And I appreciate the effort to provide estimates of the cost of this.
Right. All right. Let's go to the board. I-6, no nays. Resolution is adopted. The next item of business will be appearance of citizens. Citizens should be permitted to address city council about matters that are not on the formal agenda. Any citizen wishing to do so shall raise his or her hand and proceed to the public lecture, and after my recognizing them, state your name and address, the purpose of your appearance before council. Comments shall be limited to three minutes and shall relate to matters of city business. They shall not generally result in a formal response or action at the time of presentation because, in most cases, neither the council nor the staff will be prepared to respond effectively. However, I may answer the question or direct the city manager to do so, or direct the city manager to work with the citizen to effect resolution of the matter. Statements that are purely political in nature will not be allowed, such as campaign speeches or announcements of candidacy for office, nor will announcements of a civic or social event that is unrelated to city business. Is there any member in the audience tonight wishing to address council? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item of business. Madam Clerk.
Under elections and appointments, you have confirmation of a mayoral appointment of Thomas Tuck to the Anderson County Development Corporation operating.
And Mr. Chen.
Yes. And Richard Chen.
Richard Chen, Sr. All right. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. And I appreciate Mr. Tuck and Mr. Chen and their willingness to serve on this board. I personally talked to both of them and thanked them for their service. Next item is announcements, and in that, I want to bring to your attention a letter that I received today, earlier today, from the Oliver Springs Police Department. It was to me, copied to Mr. Watson and Chief Akagi. On December 26th, the Oliver Springs Police Department received a call that escalated quickly into a volatile situation. A town of only 3,500 people received word that we had a man barricaded in a house and was armed with not only a pistol but explosives as well. This man had not only broken into his own mother's residence, but had assaulted his family. When speaking with the man over the phone, he threatened law enforcement. At this moment, only one day after Christmas, we, as a small agency, asked for help. It was answered immediately. Chief Akagi responded to the scene with several members of the Oak Ridge Police Department and equipment that was vital to the success of this situation being brought to a peaceful resolution. It is a great day to be able to express how well our brothers and sisters in blue respond in a time of need, if not with a quick response and no hesitation for Chief Akagi and his officers to provide his support. I am afraid this situation could have been much worse. Please convey to Chief Akagi and to his officers, we appreciate you and thank you for being there for us. With great respect and thanks, Kenneth Morgan, Oliver Springs Police Chief. So Chief Akagi, if you would convey the thanks of city council and the people of, citizens of Oliver Springs to our officers and to you, sir. All right. Mr. Dotson, other announcements.
I would actually like to follow up. The Oak Ridge Schools are actually working with our Oak Ridge Police Department in providing the crisis intervention training through the schools. We've already had two of those last year. We had a system-wide in-service that involved Officer Luthke and also Officer Kelly. This is a joint cooperation also with Ridgeview, and we're going to have one coming up. This will be at Oak Ridge High School. It will be in the amphitheater at 2:30 this Wednesday, January 10th, for about 50 individuals with our school system. So I really appreciate everything our police department's doing along with our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Mr. Vogel?
So the Scarborough Center is going to be a busy place with the meeting we're going to have on the 24th there with NNSA. The following night, on the 25th, is our next blueprint meeting. So I just want folks to know that Sarah had put that out, and then we've got a nominal schedule for the next round of blueprint effort that's going to focus on cleaning up some things and then getting into more of the industrial side. So we are continuing that.
Should all receive the schedule of the upcoming meetings during the spring, in the winter, spring?
Other scheduling issues, announcements? All right. Any requests for?
Yeah, just following up on discussion earlier, I'd like to ask that we have discussion of the trade licensing board in an upcoming work session. It sounds like it's something we need to make a decision on as a council, be useful to know what the issues are.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you, Ellen. I'm sorry. Mr. Dotson, yeah, one more thing, and it will probably come up a little later, but I just really want to invite everybody to check out our work session. We will have that coming up on the 16th, I believe, and this will be at Robertsville Middle School. So we're trying to actually come out to the public and give you all an opportunity to come and address city council if you have any needs. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Watson?